I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, March 16, 2023, to order. Will the, will Ms. Jess please take the role?
President Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we now move to community announcements. Mr. Smith, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, will be Saturday, May 6th, not this Saturday, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Please note, there is no coffee and chat in April due to Safety Town Easter Egg Hunt and Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302. The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, have seen an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. If you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911 and don't rely on social media. Thank you.
Welcome, Artur Siddiqui.
With the spring season right around the corner, the village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit include work on decks, sheds, patio, residing of your house, and re-roofing. For a complete list of projects requiring permit, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/commdev/buildingPermits. We would also like to remind you not to pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure all work is up to code. If you are not sure if your project requires a permit, or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at (630) 260-6030. Earth Hour is a worldwide event, bringing together 152 countries and a digital reach of over 200 million people. The village of Glendale Heights invites the community to join others around the world by turning off your lights, televisions, computers, cell phones, and all the electronic devices for one hour on Saturday, March 25th, from 8:30 to 9:30 p.m. For more information, please visit www地earthhour.org to see what this impact can do on our planet.
Trustee Light?
Thank you. Join us on Saturday, April 1st, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens for our annual Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. All-you-can-eat pancake breakfasts will be served and include sausage and a beverage. Photos with the Easter Bunny will also be available. No pre-registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfast cost is $5, children's breakfast cost is $3, and pictures are $2. Please note, the annual Safety Town Easter Egg Hunt is sold out. For more information, call (630) 260-6060. And I will be there making pancakes on the big grill. Thank you, Chestner.
Not if we can help it.
Ms. Jess?
The village of Glendale Heights has launched a new online records request system. The system powered by GovQA provides an efficient process for managing requests from residents and the media for public records in accordance with the Illinois Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA. It also reduces paperwork and allows residents to track their requests online. For more information or to submit a request online, please visit the village's transparency page on our website at www.glandalehighs.org, or call (630) 260-6000. The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2 Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Leisure Services Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr, or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357. Thank you.
You're welcome. Artur Siddiqui.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during the snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding the winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number is (630) 260-70. During the month of April and May, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no-parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak, please.
Do you have unwanted or old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, and other recyclables? Drop them off at the one-stop reuse and recycling depot on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH2 Aquatic Center parking lot located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Items not accepted include hazardous waste, large appliances, and CFL bulbs. Document shredding will be also available at the event with a limit of four boxes per vehicle. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, visit www.glandalehighs.org, or call (630) 260-6000.
So TV or tech ward are not in this case? Ms. Rachel?
I'm sorry?
Television?
I don't believe so, no. I don't think we do accept televisions because of the tubes.
There's a separate, there's a separate contract the village has for electronic disposal, a separate program.
So it's not?
It's not a part of this program, no. Sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizens Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. You must be age 65 or better, honored before December 31st, 2022, or have a spouse who is age 65. You must have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2022 as either an owner or a renter. Have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2022, and have a utility bill that's paid in their name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050, or the Finance Department at (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. Proclamations. We have the following proclamations. A proclamation to proclaim March 25, 2023, from 8:00 a.m., 8:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. as Earth Hour, and a proclamation to proclaim April 1st to 30th, 2023, as the Valiant Maids Challenge for Water Conservation. If there are no objection, I will sign these proclamations. We also have a presentation tonight by Mr. Chuck Dabrowski, the village arborist, on a tree inventory grant, and a presentation from Labor Service Director Keith Knott on Tree City USA Award and Arbor Day. Mr. Dabrowski and Director Keith Knott?
Yes. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor and Board, for allowing Chuck and I a few minutes to discuss the village being awarded the Tree City Award, a little bit about Arbor Day, and an exciting grant project that is on the horizon. The village was awarded the Tree City USA Award in 2022 from the Arbor Day Foundation for the 26th year. This award is given to communities that have shown a commitment to their tree community. The Tree City USA program provides direction, technical assistance, public attention, and national recognition for urban and community forestry programs. The Tree City USA program was started in 1976 and has over 3,400 cities and towns. Glendale Heights is one of the over 170 from Illinois. One of the components of the Tree City recognition is to celebrate Arbor Day. This year Arbor Day is April 28th. Village staff will be celebrating Arbor Day by having the village's preschool and path program plant a tree on the village campus. Additionally, the Kiwanis Club will be working with students from District 15 to plant a tree in Nauso's Park. Because it's coming up, I only have pictures of past ones, but we have a couple of pictures of different things that we've done for Arbor Day celebrations throughout the years. As is kind of my annual tradition, when I do this, I have to give some fun facts, and this year I've got new fun facts. So first of all, the world's oldest Arbor Day is not celebrated in the United States. It's actually, it actually occurred in Mendoza, Spain in 1594. And in terms of age, the oldest tree, according to research, is Methuselah, which has a proud age of 4,852 years, and as of October of 22, 2022, was still alive. America's first Arbor Day occurred in the early 1870s, around the time Congress created Yellowstone National Park. Julius Sterling Morton was the person behind the first Arbor Day, and he later became the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture under President Grover Cleveland. At this time, I would like to turn to introduce Chuck Dabrowski, lead foreman of facilities, and the village's arborist, to let you know about some exciting tree work that the village will be doing with the help of a grant. Chuck?
Thank you, Keith. Mayor and Board, the village of Glendale Heights has been awarded a tree inventory grant, one of only 17 communities in the whole state of Illinois to get this grant. So I'm pretty stoked about it. The village of Glendale Heights has applied for and was recently awarded a $25,000 grant. Funding will help to offset the village-wide tree inventory for parkway trees, public trees, and other village-owned properties, village-owned properties, as well as providing an update to the village's urban forestry management plan. Grant funding is provided by the United States Department of Agricultural Forestry Service through the direction of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and Urban Community Forestry Program, and administered by the Morton Arboretum. So it started on the federal level, and it's working its way down, and we grabbed $25,000 of it. Why do we need an updated tree inventory and updated urban forestry plan? Our current urban forestry plan and tree inventory is 10 years old. The urban forest and tree conditions have changed over these years. The last urban forestry plan was written during the height of the Emerald Dash War. I have a whole three-ring binder that was our plan to attack that. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about that this time. Planting sites have been added due to roadway changes, utility changes. Updating the tree inventory will allow for updated maintenance plans, budgeting, and future planning. This information will become a layer on the village's updated GIS system, which will allow for real-time information in the field. It just so happens we're updating our GIS this year, so it kind of fits perfect that we're going to get all these new trees entered into this new GIS system. So what data is out there being collected? First of all, they're going to go to each tree, which I'm approximating at 7,500 village trees that we have. They're going to get a GPS location on a growing, or a growing space, the street address, get the species, the size of the tree. A certified arborist will recommend maintenance for the needs of every single tree. It'll get a tree risk assessment and plantable spaces. I got an option in the bid to get plantable spaces, but it's not, it's not a requirement of the grant. This also includes collaboration with village staff to develop a comprehensive urban management forestry plan to include trends and species diversity. That's what got us in trouble with the EAB. We had a whole bunch of asteries. Ecosystem benefits, five- and 10-year maintenance and budget planning. Education and outreach programs for the residents. I got in there that the contractor has to do some training with all the residents, which is awesome, because that's what I really like. You guys all know that, is being out there with the residents. Specifications for planting, pruning, and removals. And then once all this data is collected, it's been entered in the GIS, and we've sat down with this contractor, and we've developed a whole new urban forestry management plan, we're going to bring it back to the board for your input. Project finances. The total estimated cost, I'm thinking $64,000. That money that we're grabbing from the government is $25,000. So the total cost to the village will be $39,000, which I have, which we've budgeted in the 23-24 budget, which you'll see in May. The project timeline. March of April, we'll go to public bid and contractor selection. In May, we'll have some meetings. June through September, we'll be collecting all this data. That's the, excuse me, that's the lion's share of the work, because we've got to go to each of the 7,500 trees and enter all the data in. November, December, we'll review, divide the data, and create a new urban forestry management plan. January, we'll review it with village staff. In February of next year, I'll be bringing it to you guys to look over and give input. And in March, I got to go before the Morton Arboretum to follow up with the whole program. I want to give some thank yous to the village of Glendale Heights Kiwanis Club, Glendale Heights Club, Matthew Lee, who's a local college student in his senior year taking forestry, who all wrote letters of support to help me get this bid awarded, grant awarded. Again, we were only one of 17 out of the whole state who applied, and pretty excited that we got it. Any questions?
Chuck, you did a fantastic job getting this grant, and I'll tell you, it's...
All my volunteers are out there.
And you're going to be busy, busy, busy with your other work, too.
But in the end, I'm going to come back to you, and you're going to be busy, too.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
Chuck, one quick question. Where is that oldest tree that is alive?
It's in California. We're not supposed to divulge the location, because they don't want...
Top secret.
But it's in California in the Highlands. If you Google it, it's a nasty-looking tree, but that's probably how it survives so many years.
And you said it's 4,000 years old?
Yes.
Wow.
Keith must have been there.
Thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
We go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Not, yes. Yes, please. Just state your name and address.
I'm pretty sure you guys know that. I'm by heart now at Pope Wayne Avenue. I just have a question about consent agenda item number seven. From the last meeting, you guys talked about, was anything added in the cutting? And then I have a comment. Behind my house, behind Hall School, when they cut, and it's not the village, you know, this is a private company, I've called them multiple times, they don't pick up the trash. They just mow over it. And when it's done, it looks like crap. So is your, is that a requirement for your cutters, since our guys aren't picking up the parks? Are they going to pick up the trash? Because when we go to Nauso's, you know, you see all the cups, like, you know, they're all shredded, and so I just wonder if that's in the, because it really looks bad.
So in the contract, there are requirements for what they have to do that detail that out. So yes.
So they are supposed to pick it up? Because they weren't last year.
So Keith, for the record, why don't you just inform Mr. Pope what's being cut?
So everything that is on the agenda to be cut is the same information that was on the, that was done the last three years.
That's what you said at the last meeting.
So it's the complex, it's county right-of-ways, it's North Avenue, and it's assorted village properties that are located throughout the community.
But we're, we're cutting all the parks. We maintain all the parks.
Okay. Well, but I mean, our guys, not just giving them a pat on the back, but they do a great job on the parks, and it's, but half of it's the cleanup. And, you know, like I said, behind my house, they just don't do it. And I've called the contractor, because it's right on the side of their truck. These guys are so dumb that, you know, they just, they don't do it. And I called the manager, and he says they're going to take care of it, and then they're good for a week or two, and then it goes back to this garbage everywhere.
Does school district doing anything?
No, but that'll be in my next committee of the whole question for you guys, but thank you.
Keith, do we have anybody watching these guys?
So for our, for our mowing contractors?
No, for, yeah, for the mowing contract, for these guys mowing grass?
Yeah. Staff is overseeing that.
Well, for ours, but not for Mr. Pope's situation. It's private property. It's school district property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else from public, residents? None. You have the consent agenda before you vote. Acting village administrator, Doug Flynn, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2023. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2023. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of March 16th, 2023, in the amount of $3,441,680.56. Four, an ordinance to amend Subparagraph 3 entitled Test Results of Paragraph D entitled Maintenance Requirements of Section 9-2A-7 entitled Cross-Connection Control for Article A entitled Connection Requirements of Title IX entitled Water and Sewer of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois Backflow Testing Fee. Five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 194 Microsoft Server and Client Licenses by the village of Glendale Heights. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a Second Amendment to the Cloud Data Storage Services Agreement between Central Square, formerly known as Sun Guard Public Sector LLC, and the village of Glendale Heights. Seven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a Notice of Award for mowing and landscaping services for North Avenue, median maintenance, various village properties, various county roads, and rights of way to Army Street Avenue Traffic Medians, and the Civic Center Campus, Aquatic Center and Courtyard, Section 1, in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and authorizing the execution of a contract for Section 1 and rejecting all bids for mowing and landscaping services for various village parks, camera park, and wastewater treatment plant. Eight, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a Notice of Award for portable toilet rental and services for the village of Glendale Heights. Nine is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Go second. Trustee Pojak?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business. Number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business item 3 to 7. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item 3 to 7? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second, trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item 3 to 6 is approved. Number two?
3 through 7.
3 to 7, okay. 3 to 7, I'm sorry. It's 6 in over here. Number two, an ordinance reserving and authorizing the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issue and related matters, first reading. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, to borrow funds from the Public Water Supply Loan Program. Project number three, water supply facilities projects. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-18. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-18? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-18 is approved. Number four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the furnishing of design-build services for the water system resilience upgrades project of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-19. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-19? I need a motion for that. Trustee Pojak?
So moved.
And trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-19 is approved. Number five, an ordinance to waive bid, accept the proposal of FH Fashion, and to authorize the execution of a Notice of Award and contract for the Camera Park Turf Field Improvement Project. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-20. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-20? I need a motion for that. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroeder?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-20 is approved.
Excuse me, Mr. Coker.
Doug, when are they going to...
Doug, when are they gonna start this? Do you have any idea?
Uh, yeah, um, I talked to them today, their hope is that they might be able to break ground as early as early April.
Oh, really? Good.
Anybody else? Or, we took all the roll call.
Yeah, number six.
So, number six, an ordinance to approve a plat of easement vacation for utility and store, sewer easement for the Cavalry Drive subdivision located at 55-85 East Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-21. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-21? I need a motion for that. Uh, trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui? Uh, discussion?
So, it, it might help to describe this item as well as number seven and eight together. Items number six, seven, and eight are all related to the ML Realty Army Trail Trade Center Development Project, and they all, are all functions of accepting the public improvements, the sanitary sewer, the water main. Um, item six and seven are land entitlement actions that we needed to wait for the as-built conditions of those installations in order to precisely locate on the plats. And then item number eight is the, uh, the final acceptance of that infrastructure as well as the reduction of the bond.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-21 is approved. Number seven, an ordinance to accept a grant of easement and approve the plat of easement grant for the property commonly known as 55-85 East Army Trail Road, Glendale Heights, LNI, request to waive first reading, ordinance 2023-22. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-22? I need a motion for, uh, trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2023-22 is approved. Number eight, a resolution for initial acceptance of public improvements from MLRP Army Trail, uh, Army, uh, Army Trail Trade Center, DBA ML Realty Partner for the Cavalry Drive subdivision located at 55-85 East Army Trail Road, Glendale Heights, LNI, and releasing 90% of the applicable portion of the performance bond or applicable portion of the balance of the cash deposit RES 2023-R-24. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2023-R-24? I need a motion for that. Uh, trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Second trustee Light?
Second.
Uh, discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2023-R-24 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Please state your name and your address.
Sure, Cheryl Swanson, I live on 115 West Fullerton. First, let me start off by saying, Public Works, thank you so much for helping with my mom who had a plumbing issue, they came out, they were awesome, so thank you. With, um, the item number with the Cameron Park, it's no criticism or anything. If the school's gonna be using it, are you guys gonna charge the school as well? Or is it just the village property and just the village will be able to use it? I was just a little concerned.
We, we've entered into discussions with the school district to work out, uh, what they could help assist with financially.
Okay. And then if they wanna put leagues there or use it for after school?
Yeah, they use that, that soccer field for recess.
Oh, okay.
But that's really.
So, would they still be able to use it once you put the new turf in?
Uh, yeah, but we're talking to them about, uh, we've had preliminary discussions on what they could help assist us with financially to kind of offset that use. But we're, I've had two conversations with the district.
Okay, fixed up.
Anybody else from residents, public? Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, trustee Light?
Most to adjourn.
And trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Meritato, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to call the committee home meeting of March?
16th.
16th, 2023. Can you note each present?
So noted.
Is there any add-ons or deletions? Mohammed?
Farmer market.
Anyone else?
Are we going to discuss this legal contract today?
What's that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, I want.
Anybody else? Okay. Public comment, does any, uh, anybody in the public want, wants to make a comment? Step to the podium, state your name.
Mike Light, you're not making attention.
I've been paying attention, sorry, Ed Pope Wayne Avenue.
Thank you. All right, uh, for three years, about three years or so ago, they redid the, uh, they put in a, redid the Hall School, and they put in this, I don't know if it's a detention, retention, whatever, the, they took out the soccer field and put in this big drainage ditch. And it's garbage, they don't take care of it, it's filthy, it smells. We can't even go out on our deck in the summer. I've been complaining for three years, I was working with Joanne. Also, this is no reflection on Mike because he inherited the problem, he might not even know how much about it. But every year, it's gotten progressively worse, they don't take care of it. I went out there in the, with Joanne and a bunch of her staff in the fall. They found all kinds of things wrong with it. It's, it's not built properly, it's not draining properly, it all pools in one area. It, it has sank feet in the one area, which it was only supposed to be inches and it's feet now. And they came out, they staked it, they were gonna do repairs, and they have not done a single thing since then. My bigger, and my bigger problem is, since they've built this, I've, I've been in my house 30 years this year, it's my 30th year right now. I've never had mice. I have mice constantly, I spent over $1,500 so far abating the mice, having my house, having my foundation sealed, um, it's still not working, I still, just in the last week, we, six more mice. The people came back out, now they want 1,800 more to do like an intensive foundation seal because they, they said mice can get into micro cracks. I've been here 30 years, I did not have one problem until they built this pond thing behind us. And it's all vegetation laying on the ground, they don't take care of it, they don't keep it up, and again, it reeks. So, I asked, I've submitted dozens of pictures to Joanne of, instead of having, they put all these natural prairie grasses in there. And we have coyotes in there, we have fox in there, the deer sleep in there at night. Our dog was covered in ticks at one point, we can't even go out in the back, we can go in our yard, but he can't go out to the park area. Because it's just that bad, and it's really an unfair disservice to me and my, the other residents that surround the pond. Because the other problem, like I said, is the mosquitoes and the smell is so horrific. Now, I realize it's the school district, but I've asked the village to get involved, it's taken three years to get to this point. And now it's been six months with nothing has happened, I do realize the winter has come, but it's gotten so much, so much more worse. I, the pictures that I gave to Joanne, all other villages that have these things, they're grass. They're not natural, I mean, the plants get, you know, five, six feet tall. It's, it's, and that's the other thing, it's hideous, it's, it's so ugly. When, you know, I lived there for 30 years, it was a beautiful soccer field, the kids played on it. I understand the improvements that the school needed to be done for safety, and they had to put the bus turnaround, and they had to do something. But it's really become a huge detriment to us. And now, like I said, they're not doing anything, even though they found all these problems. So, I'd like Mike's staff to not only get on top with the spring coming up, find out what they're gonna do with it, but I think the village should escalate with this, with the school district. Because I've been complaining for three years to deaf ears. And even though substantial violations have been found, they're not repairing them. Ed, I guess, um, I'm not really well-versed on this, so if it's possible, I'd like a little bit of time to maybe acquaint myself with the background of this and, and deliver you a, a thorough response. I, I will say, it's been my experience that natural, naturally vegetated ponds do have some of these, just kind of as a consequence of them being natural, that the mosquitoes or, or maybe, um, uh, mice or, or other small animals in and out of there, so it, it is a, um, it can be a nuisance and. No, it's way past nuisance. I can't go out on my deck in the summer because of, A, the smell, and as soon as dusk hits, there's thousands of mosquitoes out there. You can't sit on your deck. After 30 years, I can't sit on my deck anymore at night. So, I'm not saying it's your fault, I'm just saying that, you know, it's time for the village to step up and escalate. You know, the school's gotten a pass on this for three years, that, you know, someone's gonna look at it, oh, someone's gonna come out and survey it. Oh, uh, we're having the engineers relook at it. And then finally, they did, and still nothing's been done. And I'm getting deep out of pocket now, I'm 1,500 bucks right now for, just for this year's mice problem. And they want another 18 to seal all the micro cracks. Why should I have to do that? They're not gonna reimburse me.
Who's engineers, ours or theirs?
Theirs.
The school districts?
Well, the, the school district brought theirs out with Joanne, and Joanne brought a couple of her employees, there was probably about eight of us out there that day. Tom Byalice was out there, Tommy's still with you, right? Yeah, of course. Well, you should have a file this thick, I mean, just, just the photos I've given, because there's, having that natural vegetation back there, it, it, it's really become burdensome to us. I've gone to Carroll Stream, Itasca, Wooddale, and Bloomingdale, and took pictures of all the ones that are behind houses like ours. And they're seat, they're just grass. You know, they fill up with water when they get the bad rains for the runoff, and then it slowly evaporates or goes into the soil. But they're just nice, smooth, green ditches, the kids can still play in them, you can't go in these things, and they do nothing but fester animals and rodents. Would it be possible?
Ed, if you, if you have those pictures, you just said you went around the villages taking pictures? Send them to Mike, let, let, let Mike take a look at them and see what kind of.
He said he already did.
Well, I mean, I sent them to Joanne, I, 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 no disrespect, and I, I've not, I've not worked.
We'll find out.
Mike is new, and I'm, I'm sure he has nothing, he don't know what's going on with that at all, but Keith, what, what is going on with that? Is that, is that District 15?
That is District 15.
15, right?
Look, I try to be patient and, and deal with this, but it's been three fricking years, and now the out-of-pocket to me, I'm, really, for the last three years, I'm out of pocket over two grand already, just dealing, just purely to get rid of mice. I've never, in 30 years, I've never had one mouse in my house, and for the last three years, it started out with a couple, then a couple more. This year's been horrendous, I mean, we've, we've caught since September probably over 15 to 20 mice in our house already. And between us having the live catch ones, because my son is, you know, you can't kill the little mice. And then, you know, then the, the abatement guy putting all his stuff around, and it, it's not stopping. And I just, I just think it's a huge disservice, and I, I just want you guys, as my representatives, to step up with the school because they're not gonna listen to me, they don't even return my calls.
You can also send pictures to Jazz, you know.
Yeah, I'll send pictures, but all, all it is, is of green space, but it's the same, like I said, instead of having these wild plantings with six foot and, I'm not kidding you, come out to my house right now after the meeting, I'll show you, there'll be coyotes, deer, they're all in there.
Together?
No, no, don't, believe me, but when you, you know when the coyotes get the deer, because you can hear them, they go crazy. Where the other villages put in, you've seen them, they just like, look like big giant grass ditches. That's what all the other villages have, nobody has this piece of crap behind them like I do.
So, I'll get with Mike tomorrow or early next week, and we'll develop a plan.
Okay, I appreciate it. Mike, this, again, it's no slam on you, but if, Joanne must have left a file this thick behind of all the crap I've complained about. I'm sure I have one. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Anybody else?
Michael Ontiveros, 1871 Scarborough Drive, obviously Glendale Heights. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank the Daily Herald for making the correct choice for endorsing Pat Meritato and Bill Schmidt for village trustees of their respective districts. In addition, I also want to recognize Michael Light for an outstanding job representing my district, District 3. Congratulations to you all. Second, if you haven't registered to vote, I urge you to do so. As Americans, it is our civic duty to vote. In essence, your vote allows your voice to be heard over the issues that matter most to you. Historically speaking, local elections tend to have lower voter turnout. Hence, your vote can actually make even more of a difference than you think. I urge all of my fellow residents to step up to the plate, and come Election Day, please vote. Don't forget the date, Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. As a resident and well-respected businessperson, I want to give back and help our community by being actively involved in some of the committees we have here in Glendale Heights. There's the Charity Golf Classic Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, and others. So, I asked the board, how do I sign up?
Uh, you can email to Jazz, and she will take care of that.
And then from there?
You can email, you can email the mayor, and you can request to be on a committee. But he is the one that makes the appointments, not the board. So, if he don't, if he doesn't request you to be on the committee, the board, we can't put you on the committee. It's his recommendation. I have a couple of people that I want to put on committees, but can't get them approved. He makes, the mayor makes the appointments. So, I mean, you want to, you want to put him for committee? Put in, send it, send whatever you need to him. And if he says yes, fine. If he says no, we, the board can, we cannot put you on the committee.
May I ask why?
That's one thing that he, that's one position that he can do with our board approval.
Okay, may I ask why? With fellow residents here behind me and those who say that want to be on the committees, we know it's a volunteer program. We're offering our services to you to benefit the city overall. I've got years of experience in management, years of experience in working with others, and, uh, being a good team player. So, if we're gonna be denied the opportunity to participate in these committees, it's a shame. Not just for myself, but other residents here who maybe have applied, uh, in past times.
Mary?
Mr. Ontiveros, I gave you answer, please send me your email and send me your options, 1, 2, 3, what, where you want to serve, uh, serve as a resident.
If I could interject?
We do need.
There is an application online that, um, allows residents to put all of their information in along with all of our committees and commissions that can then be emailed in so that there is a formal process to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mary?
Wait, Mike.
Yes.
I, I have been on committees with Mike, and I want to tell you something, he would be an asset to our community. The other thing I want to say is, if you have not been accepted on, on a committee, can he not attend those meetings?
Yes, he could.
I think you should attend them.
He could attend any meeting that he, that he wishes to attend, I mean. He could attend any meeting that he, that, that he wishes to attend, I mean, can, I mean-
But actually, I do want you to know that I've been on committees with Mike, and I think he would be an asset to any committee he's involved in.
And Mary, I just want to, ironically you said that, because we haven't spoken about this, but going across some of my notes back, dating back to two thousand and four, September eighteenth, to be specific, when I was the president for the Chamber of Commerce, and then some, spent a lot of time being vice president of the Chamber of Commerce. I had a, an organizational chart here showing me everybody involved, including yourself right here, as being part of the Board of Directors. For Ed and Sons, going back all the way to two thousand and four.
Yes, I've always worked well with you. But you're very easy to work with.
I appreciate that. Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mohammed?
Yeah, before you leave, Mr. Mike, uh, I just want to thank you for volunteering for those. And I agree with, uh, Mary, you would be an asset, and I'm looking forward to be, for you to be part of the committee, and give us all your valuable suggestions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, come, come up to the podium.
They're nice, they gave me a mic.
Okay, go ahead.
It's still me. Uh, two things, it's election season, I know that. What I saw happen out, over the weekend, I'm still upset about. When you're out campaigning, please do not go up to minors and talk to them and scare them. Their parents aren't home, you should have no reason whatsoever to talk to a thirteen-year-old child about voting and who to vote for. You leave the card and you walk away. That's all I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna mention names, but I witnessed it, I filmed it, and I talked to the young lady after it happened, and she told me she was scared, because she's told them, "My mom and dad are not here, could you go?", and the person did not. So while you're out, I know it's, everybody wants to vote and get their name out, but please, leave the minors alone, and any person elderly that's by themselves and says they don't want to talk to you, just drop your card, say thank you, and walk away. Because I don't want to hear people complaining about this. But, again, please, just do what you gotta do, and don't be harassing little kids. There's no reason they can't vote, thanks.
All right, thank you, anybody else? State your name, please.
Yes, it's Jessica Breedy, I'm at three seven six East Montana Avenue. I'm just wanting to introduce myself. Um, I'm running for District Eighty-seven School Board. I do not go up to minors. Um, that was a very good point. Um, I just want more representation for Glendale Heights on our local high school district. Definitely want to serve the community. Um, a lot of you recognize my face, I'm active, um, within the Cub Scout, Boy Scout community here locally, as well as the Girl Scouts, um, our local library board as well. I actually should have been at a meeting for that tonight, but I'm here. Um, just really want to have a voice for the community, bridge the different school dis, the different buildings, and the different towns together. Um, I agree, please, encourage everybody to go out and vote, April the fourth. I'm number four on the ballot, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be here at the end of the evening. Would love to talk to everybody, yes.
Can you state your name, please, again?
Yeah, Jessica Breedy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Are you a Glendale Heights resident?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
I'm so glad you are, because I don't think we have enough of them on the school board.
Yes, thank you, you're paying attention, I got all flustered. I've been a resident for twenty-three years.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, I'm actually an educator in the district as well, so I know the students, the students that I teach when they're young, feed into the district that I'm running for, so, you know, I'm really invested in the, uh, the education.
I wish more residents would get involved with that district. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all that you guys do, this is a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Anyone else? Okay, being none, we move on to committee recommendations. There are none. Okay, so we move on to discussion regarding identification ordinance for elected officials. This should continue from March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. So, is there any, any, any discussion? Chester?
Okay, and in front of everybody, you have this, uh, proposal, and it's a revised proposal. I want to eliminate, and I'm saying eliminate, all items in red.
All right, did everybody, did everybody get a copy of this?
Yes, yes.
All trustees got a copy, right?
Yes.
Okay, everything is in red? Okay, so if you have any objections, let me know, and, uh, we'll take it from there.
Okay, uh, is it done, are you done? Okay, let me, can I talk now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I read this, uh, indemnity contract, uh, agreement, it's not contract yet, agreement. Are there, I, what I find over here, lot of, you know, that excluding intentional torts and willful and wanton, uh, conduct. I do want to keep it, that is, uh, my le, my opinion, and is a valid thing. I don't want to exclude that. Number one, I will go line by line, there's a lot of loophole, and those things, we should not be o- over here. Any, I'm not against protecting and helping, uh, village employees, elected officials, but as long, uh, as they are acting in their official capacity, they should be protected. If they are not, someone is not act, acting in his or her official capacity, we should not protect, you know, number one, legal services, we should not provide legal services, number one. Number two, we should not provide damages, you know? This is virage money, we are supposed to work honestly, as a reasonable and prudent person. It's not that they have number, and they can do whatever they want. I don't allow, my vote will be no for that. And I will go, the, again, the purpose of section to provide legal defense, as I mentioned, the one employee, elected officials, any member on the commission, all those should get, uh, uh, legal defense. But as long as they are working in their official capacity. I gave further example, if someone is on the board, someone on the village meeting, someone on the commission meeting, on the village property, yes. And if someone is uninvited, and participating in any uninvited meeting, village should not, uh, provide legal services, defense, legal defense, and damages. So that guy, any person, including myself, should be able, or should pay if he is not, uh, in, acting in his or her, uh, official capacity. Punitive damages, village should not be responsible, you know, we are putting a lot of weight on our resident. Basically, these resident will suffer if we allow this, you know, if we do, do not change, you know, language of this agreement. Uh, to me, it's like opening door to litigation, giving unauthorized authority, and providing unauthorized legal defense and damages.
Okay, uh, Michael?
And other, I'm not done, uh, let me, you know, anybody who is involved in self-business, and in involving self-business, he or she is sued, village should not be responsible, village should not pay legal defense, as well as, uh, damages, any damages, you know? On the same first paragraph, it say, and this section, this, I'm reading that line. Uh, this section, even if such is inconsistent with the state statute. We should go by the state statute. To me, this is very ambiguous and vague language, that is unconstitutional. Second, it says that, uh, those, if someone is sued, and that guy, defendant means, any defendant, I have, I don't have to explain, you know, those employee or elected, defendant means, you know, village employee or, uh, elected official. He or she is entitled to have his, her own, uh, choice of attorney. That attorney should be approved by the president, as well as, not by the majority, by the president, as well as by the board. It's not, we are giving blank check to those people who don't want to be responsible for their acts. I'm against that, you know? If we provide some, uh, defense attorney, that should be approved by the president, as well as by the board.
Mr. Coker, are you answering everything that's in red?
I'm as, I'm going those reading which are not in red even, you know?
I want all the ones in red answered.
For, if you are listening, I am-
I am listening, it's hard to understand you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, 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 let's cut it out.
Sorry, you know-
The mayor wants to, the mayor wants to speak, let, let him speak, let him say what, whatever he wants to say. He's the mayor, let, let him go ahead and say what he's gotta say. Go ahead, keep going.
That function, uh, act of that employee should be within the scope of agency. Agency over here is a village of Glendale Heights. It's not as a private individual, as this agreement says, you know? I don't like that, and it should not be part of that agreement. Okay, uh, second page is used, village, you know, village will determine, village is very ambiguous, whose village? Is president village, uh, mayor's village, board after, board is village? Doc, uh, village acting administrator, Doug Smith, uh, Doug Flint, his village? So we need some interpretation for the village, you know, who's resp, who's the village, you know? It should be very clear, you know, not just village, does not make any sense, you know? His village is repeated many time, village, village, village. Another thing is, this agreement says that, villi, I mean, village will provide, you know, legal defense, you know? And if there are punitive damages, village will not pay, you know? So if village not going to pay punitive damages, why village is paying, you know, legal defense, which that employee or elected official is not entitled, you know? So is there any privilege that, I mean, any, uh, way that if village has paid some legal defense money, because village is responsible to insurers, for first ten thousand dollar is a lot of money? And there are a lot of suits against village employees right now. Why village is spending ten thousand dollar for, you know? We, I don't want, these residents should suffer and pay for undue village defense, you know? I'm against that. I'm against getting, now we have ordinance, getting jobs for relatives. I'm against that, getting village contract for resident, you know? I am hundred, ten percent against, and I will be against any act that is promoting village business, I mean, uh, family business, or cronies, or job for relatives, you know, I'm against that. And then, uh, each, the contract shall control, over here, which contract shall control, you know? I, I'm, it's very ambiguous, which contract, I didn't understand, you know, this contract, you know?
You say you didn't, you didn't understand?
It's a ambiguous term, you know, like village, village is, village will, yeah, village will, is say like, you know, village. So it should be more explicit, you know? Who represent village, you know? Village not like, somewhat like board, president, uh, village administrator, or chief, you know? So we don't know, so it should be, language should be very explicit, you know? Uh, these are the main things, I'm worried about that. And again, I'm not against one person or any person, I am against basic rules, you know? That if village is providing defense, it should be legal, it should be under rules and regulation, under state, under US Constitution, you know? It's not that village board is represented by six trustee, and they can do whatever they want to do. And I tell you, I announced today, you know, if this board will do any illegal act, I will personally sue this board. And in that, I will mention my speech that I'm not going, I'm not, uh, sending message against my resident. This is for the resident, and I will protect my resident as long as it goes, you know? Thank you.
Done?
Done.
Okay, Mike?
Pat, what are you looking for, direction?
I'm looking for direction, what you guys, what the board wants to do with this. You want to eliminate everything in red? It's up, it's up to the board, what, what, whatever the board decides.
I guess we'll direct-
I need a motion, or I need something?
Do we need a motion?
I need some kind of, uh, I need a motion to move it to the board.
All right, I would make a motion to move it to the board with the removal of the intentional torts, all the red, um.
Peter, do we have to read this, or?
No, this is just for your discussion.
This is our discussion.
If somebody's making a motion, you would be making a motion for us to bring it back as an ordinance.
Yes.
You're directing me then, I guess, to appear in order, is that what you, that's what you-
Okay, what is your motion, Mike?
It was a motion to bring this back as an ordinance, minus the, uh, the highlighted red items that we had talked about, and bring it back as an ordinance.
And just for clarification, nothing's passing.
Not, right, nothing's passing, just direction.
What for me to do?
So do I have to second it?
That seems there's a motion.
Okay, second it.
Okay, so I need, uh, roll call, I need a roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
President Coker?
No.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, so Peter, I guess, that's all you need to know, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm just writing, I'm making my notes, and noting the vote.
Okay, fine, thank you, Peter. Okay, what do we, uh, okay, we're gonna move on. Okay, we'll move on to other.
Well, you got cricket.
Number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to move on to, uh, I forgot about, I forgot about the, uh, cricket. Okay, what we had here on this one, okay, it's on this one. Okay, formulation of cricket, RFP, Evaluation Committee. Is there a motion to move this to the board with a recommendation, or do we have a discussion?
It's a discussion, I am.
It's discussion, well, we're just putting together the committee. Um, I'd like to see the committee that was, uh, we had last time present over the same thing, but with the addition of Darcy, I'd like to add to this. So that would be Darcy, Doug, um, Keith, forgot Keith's name, my goodness. Um, and, um, Chester and Mary.
So that would be, that would be the addition of one?
Yes, that would be five.
With Darcy, so that'd be five. Okay, do we have a motion in it, or everybody agree on it, or?
Yep.
Do we need a motion on it?
I mean, the last-
Is that what we want?
Doug, the last few times, haven't we brought back a resolution for doing the committee? I, I think that's what we've done.
We, yes, and we should formalize this committee into a resolution with a-
Yes.
Uh, end date, and- end date, and that it's specific to bringing to the board a recommendation of a vendor.
It would terminate, the committee would terminate at the end of the awarding of the RFP.
That's right.
So if that's what this committee wanted to do, then there would be a motion to direct me to come back with probably a resolution to form this committee with the people that have been specified.
Okay, do we have, do we have a motion to do that?
Does it need a motion?
Mohammed?
Yeah. He cannot take part if his relative involved.
Okay, Mr. Smith, so moved. Okay, so second?
Second.
Okay, so on favor, do we need a roll call? We don't need roll call, right, Peter?
No, I'm not, I'm not
I don't know if there's more discussion, or then it would be just a voice vote, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, it's a voice vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Before you, before we finish voting, I just want to, we can bring that resolution back for the formal record in April.
The first meeting.
Yes, but between now and then, I would like us to meet as a committee with the board approval to start vetting the applicants so that we can bring back a recommendation to the board on April 6th.
Oh, that'd be fine. Better get started.
Yeah, that'd work for me.
Time's running out.
Yeah, that'd work for me.
So, Doug, you're looking for a board's approval, or what?
So, Peter, however we can do this, but we're on a timeline.
I know, but you're looking to approve something with a committee that hasn't even been formed. Oh, sorry.
You're looking to form something with a committee that, you're looking to approve something that's under the committee's guise without even the committee being So, the board can form a committee. Correct. So if the board wants to form a committee this evening for the purposes of cricket, we have on the record that the committee will be over once the board has in hand a recommendation from the committee, and it's approved. But the board can make a committee today by ordinance, and we can't wait till April 6th to start the vetting process.
No, really, no.
Sure.
We'll craft it in a way that we will try to do both on the same thing.
And I want to add Bill Poling also on the committee.
It's up to the board.
It's up to the board, but
It's up to the board. If the board wants to have one more person besides Darcy?
Wait, hold on, there's one more.
Wait, there was?
I think we have enough.
I think we have enough, so.
There is a motion on the floor, correct?
Right, there's a motion on the floor for this committee with the five people.
I'm just trying to do the procedure right, so unless that motion's withdrawn or amended.
For motion, and I have objection against
Call for the question.
Chester and Mary.
Okay, call for the question. We need a vote.
They are interested
Call for the question. We need a vote.
They are interested member. Board can't say no, but this is my objection.
Okay.
Number one, adding
Pat, you got the floor now.
We need a vote. There was a call for the question.
We want Bill, I want Bill Poling
Is it all in favor or what?
And I don't want these two trustee.
Yes, aye.
I'm against, you know, taking part of trustee Srikhi in this activity.
Five people on the committee has been appointed. Okay, let's move on. Let's see, we got
You have farmer's market.
Okay, we have other farmer's markets. Mohammed?
Yes, so Mr. Keith, my favorite. What's the update for farmer's market? I have asked before, so do you have something for me?
I don't have an update for you right now, mostly because, quite honestly, I didn't talk to my staff to find out an update. Sorry, that's my fault. I will have an update for you at the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I need one more thing. I want to say thank you for the public works, Rachel, Doug, whoever was on your staff to get the grant today for $85,000.
Oh, it's Rachel and her staff.
Okay, Rachel and your staff. Congratulations. We can use that money for I'm glad it was awarded today, so that's good. Do we have any more money coming in? We do?
We're hoping for the IEPA grant to mirror the expenses for the project. It's probably about $600,000, the IEPA grant.
Ah, great. All right, great job. Thank you. Any motion to adjourn?
Just one more. Great job, Rachel. I also want to wish all the best to my fellow trustees who are running for reelection on April 4th. So good luck, and thank you.
Okay, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So second?
Second.
Second, all favor?
If he wants to talk, you know.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion adjourned, meeting's over. Thank you.
Thank you.